The regular council meeting, December 5th, 2012, will now be called to order. I'd ask the city clerk to do the roll call.
Mr. Michael?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Columbo? Mr. Gearing?
Here.
Mayor Pike?
Here. Let's pledge allegiance to the flag. I would like to lead you through the fire of the United States of America and to the reward for what is stamped: One Nation, Under God, and Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, before we hear from any of the guests, we're not going to make a three-ring circus out of any of our meetings. I would ask that everybody keep it in order. And when you speak, speak, and then let the other person speak when they're ready to speak. So, I'm going to ask everybody to please keep this order. Now, our first guest speaker will be Jim Greco.
Hey, I understand that John Ober is doing the survey or whatever?
Yes.
And he didn't complete this? Did he? Has he completed?
Are you pretty well finished with that, John?
I have a preliminary report to present to the council tonight.
Okay.
So, is it completed or not?
It's only completed if the council accepts it.
Okay. All right, do you want me to come up there?
I mean, if you can.
I'd need to.
Because it's going to be short and sweet, but...
I'd just like to ask, sorry.
I'd like to ask Mr. Ober, or you?
Mayor, I live on the corner of Princeton and Marion Street. Okay? And a couple of questions. I'd like to know what warranted the city to put the speed bumps in. And I'm actually commending the gentleman back there for trying to protect his kids and the speeders coming, trying to deter the speeders from speeding. Problem I have with it, I'm not mad about the speed bumps. What I'm upset about is the fact that we are, the traffic now is coming down around and not going up and down Oakland Avenue anymore. They're coming up past my place. Now, we have children in our area. We have buses. We have a school at the end of our street. And now, all the traffic has started to come down around. And these people are bringing their kids because it's a semi-private school, I guess. I'm not sure what it is out there, Chestnut Ridge. And the fact of the matter is, I'm retired. Everybody knows me up in the area. They know I sit on my patio, and I have a cigar, and I watch all this happening. Now, if we're going to put speed bumps, now, like I said, I don't know what happened about the deal with the speed bumps or anything, because I don't know, I didn't know about the survey, to tell you the truth. And what I'd like to know is if we could put speed bumps to deter the speeding cars up on Oakland and redirect the traffic down through my area and up my street and up the Princeton and the Daniel Street and all these other streets. And I've asked people why they come that way. They said, "We don't want to go over to speed bumps up on Oakland." But what I'm saying is, if we're going to do the, try to stop the speeders with speed bumps, let's put them down Princeton, because I do know that they come up and down Princeton Avenue. There's no stop signs, and they come up there 60, 70 mile an hour. So, I'm asking the council to let us know whether or not, if we're going to apply the speed bumps to one section or one street, are we going to be able to do it on the other streets to deter the speeding? Because we have children, Tommy Roberts has two grandsons. He keeps them. They stay at his house. Michael Kavanaugh has three sons. Eddie Evans has two sons, uh, grandsons. They get off the school bus there. They walk up to grandma's, and then the parents come. Well, what I'm saying is, I'm all for, my thing is, I'm all for the protection of the kids in the, in the, all of that area, not just one street. So, I'm asking, are we going to put speed bumps in on Oakland Avenue? Which I don't know whether John came up with the answers for that, whether they're going to be allowed to have them in. And if we're going to do that, let's do it for everybody. That's all I would say.
This might be the time, John, to address your study and give him your recommendation or your opinion on what you have found. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for listening, guys. Okay, I did give Kim. She's going to pass out to all the council members right now. Okay, the primary purpose of the study, I mean, the purpose of the study is not, is it's a traffic calming study. It's not to try to deter speeders or anything like that, because my traffic calming measures won't deter if somebody's speeding between the measures. Okay? It's basically that the purpose of a traffic calming study is to deter cut-through traffic in the neighborhood. Those people that are trying to cut through to circumvent going down around or something like that. So, the purpose of the study was to try to determine within the economics that the city can afford ways to deter people from cutting through the neighborhood, outsiders from cutting through the neighborhood. Okay? So, the primary concern seems to stem around Oakland and Downer avenues and the cut-through traffic from Route 40 to Pittsburgh Street, or people trying to do that. So, to looking at the economics of the city and the best possible way to deter cut-through traffic, and keep it as simple as possible, we, and honestly, I don't know about 60 mile an hour or anything like that, but while we were doing the study, we certainly observed people going over the posted speed limit. That certainly was occurring. So, but, and we, and as part of the study, we did talk to the chief. And although some of what I'm going to present, he's not in favor of, it is, they are observed traffic calming measures. The first thing I need to say is, the speed humps, as they are constructed right now, do not meet the standard for a speed hump. So, if they are to remain, they have to basically be reconstructed wider bases and not as, not as high as they are right now, minimum heights and things like that. And I may even recommend them being relocated to more of an intersection. Now, as you all remember, last month, I told you, you probably wouldn't like what I come up with. So, as part of my recommendations to council, the first, the first thing I would recommend is because most of the problem seems to be cut-through traffic from Route 40 to 51, I would propose that Oakland Avenue from Princeton to West Main Street be one-way in a southwest direction. That would be one-way from Princeton to Route 40. That would deter anybody from Route 40 making a left. They would not be able to make that left anymore. From Princeton on Oakland again, from Princeton to Downer, it would be one-way in that northeast direction, from Princeton to Downer. That way, if somebody were to come off of 51 and want to get to 40, they wouldn't be able to come up Downer, make the right to go down Oakland all the way to 40. The next one-way street would be from Stockton on Montview, from Stockton to Route 40. Nobody would be able to make a left. You can see what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to force the traffic down West Main Street the way they're supposed to be going. They wouldn't be able to make that left. The first left they would be able to make would be on Nassau Street. It would be one-way to Stockton. And then Kingston would be one-way to Stockton. Kensington, one-way to Stockton. The other one-way street, all the other one-way streets would exist the way they are right now. I would propose to make Elizabeth, or Marion Street from Elizabeth to Downer one-way in the northeast direction. That way, anybody coming off of Pittsburgh Street wouldn't be able to come up Downer, shortcut down Marion, up Princeton, and use the one-way over to Route 40. In addition to all those one-way streets, every intersection in the community would either become a three-way or a four-way stop, depending on what the intersection's like. Most of them would be three-ways where their one-ways are, but if there were two-way traffic each way, there would be stop signs installed appropriately. That would certainly deter anybody that doesn't live in the neighborhood from traveling through the neighborhood because of the extra travel routes and turns they would need to make. Doesn't help you guys that live in the neighborhood, because now you have to make additional turns also. But that's based on the widths of the streets and everything that exists right there right now. That would be my recommendation to council in lieu of the speed humps. If you want the speed humps, that would be another proposed way of doing it, but they would have to be constructed in accordance with PennDOT standards.
Hold on, sir. Hey, Mayor, I have a, I have a recommendation. May I have a tour? Mayor, do you think that maybe we should either, or you should develop either a, I don't know, a task board, or we could have a public meeting and this information can be passed out and then discussed with one specific, with one specific issue in mind, instead of, maybe we could give this out for a public meeting. You can either develop, have a meeting, I would probably maybe a public meeting or task board.
I think that's an excellent idea, is to bring this, instead of going in at a council meeting like this, so that you can exchange ideas and develop, you present this plan into the entire community, exchange ideas, and maybe modify the plan somewhat.
If we discuss it right now for council meeting, there's going to be a lot of opinions for or against. And this is a meeting where, you know, there's some order and decorum. Maybe if we can have an open meeting where we could just sit around the table and then the recommendation, that meeting to come back to council.
That's correct.
Like as a task board or something like that. But that would be, I think, the mayor's decision, or if you want, if you do, is I can make a motion. What do you think, Mayor?
I believe that's right. I don't think that we could settle here tonight if we pay for the midnight. I think we need to work this like a workstation.
Yes, sir.
We try to make everybody as happy as we can make them. That's what we're all about. And to make it the safest possible way. And I don't think anybody likes speed humps. And I don't really think anybody likes one-way streets. So, guess what? We're going to have to get together and try to work this out the best way we can.
Would you like me to make that an emotion?
I believe, I think that's right.
I make a motion that we have a public meeting after 30 days. A 30-day period, we'll be able, you'll be able to come in and get this information. We'll be able to distribute it to you. You can look at it, and then we'll have a public meeting. So, I make a motion, public meeting within 30 days for discussion of the traffic calming. We've got a question in the audience.
Can I just say one thing about what to take into consideration when you do this? There's an awful lot of buses and an awful lot of special needs vans that goes up in that area. Just take that into consideration.
Well, we got a school. I think that could all come out in the meeting you're talking about.
Okay.
And what else? I think we all should get together. This room should be packed like this every month, not just for traffic, speed bumps. Yes?
Yes, sir. Will the speed bumps stay in place until you guys come up with a decision on what you're going to do?
Yes, sir.
Just to, as a deterrent?
Yeah. I don't think we should change anything to after the meeting. Can you just wait, because we're in like a middle of motion. We got this kind of questions on the motion. Well, after we get a second, I don't think we have a second for the motion.
I second the motion.
Well, I don't want you to take it, though.
Questions on the motion?
I would just like to go a little further, and I'd like to know what objections the police force have to your plan. You said they had some objections.
It's basically emergency response with one-way streets and things like that. I mean, when you, when you have two-way streets, they are able to respond at a quicker response time than if they would have to basically go around the block to get to areas that are in one-way streets. The same thing would happen with fires, fire, police, emergency ambulance services. All emergency services would have to, they have to obey the law unless it's a dire emergency. But I mean, you've got to basically obey the laws of the motor vehicle laws of the street. So, it's basically response time to the, to any incidents that would be in those areas.
John, you still with this on the stop, so you gotta go. I mean, one-way streets?
Uh, well, no. The speed limit sign doesn't stop speeders either. I mean, there are still going to be people that don't obey the speed limit. My, my calming study is not going to stop speeders. My calming study is going to deter people from cutting through the neighborhood. Those outsiders that have no business being in the neighborhood, it's going to deter them, because basically, it's going to take them longer or just as long to go through the neighborhood than it would to go down and around on the state roads like they should be going.
We'll properly advertise this, so we can all, everybody can have their input, and hopefully, we can come up with something.
I just have one question. This is all fine to sit down and do another meeting or whatever, and we're all for that, but our street is being harassed. People are blowing their horns from one, the beginning of Oakland Avenue to the end. They are screaming out their windows at us. And I know this isn't your issue, but we're in the process. It's fast becoming a legal matter, because our kids are being harassed by this. They're scared to death. We're afraid of our kids.
Of what? Of what? What are they afraid of?
Well, you pulled in front of our house.
Not my kids. They're afraid that you put speed bumps on your street, and now they're speeding on my street.
You guys are pulling in front of our house.
I didn't pull in front of your house.
I just say, I said, some of you people were pulling in front of our house, speeding.
It's, it's becoming harassed.
It's total harassment. We had a private investigator, it gets so bad, an attorney. It's out of control. Or am I right in looking at it?
You're harassed by the private. You're a private agent.
Okay. Hold on, Peter. Hold on. That's sort of classy, buddy.
Well, you know what? You actually reflect your character. That's all.
Exactly. Should I bring them out? Because I've been showing them.
Hey, guys, show a hand.
If everybody, hold on, hold on, everybody. If you'd like to listen to me for a second. The mayor did advise that this was going to be handled in a public meeting later. This is an organized council meeting. I can tell you right now, the next person that speaks is going to be arrested for disturbing a public meeting. I'm going to tell you that right now. So, the mayor can either move on with resolutions or continue to address people individually so that they can ask questions. Anybody speaks out of time, and they're going to be arrested.
Both these questions? We can vote into the meeting.
Let's vote.
This is a vote to, by Mr. Michael's motion to have a public meeting within 30 days to discuss the calming study. Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes. Also, it'll be advertised, so everybody will know. And we want everyone to be here, or be at the meeting, so that we can really try to work this out. We're just as irritated with it as you are. So, let's get together and let's work it out. Do we have any comments now on any agenda items? This has to be something, an agenda item. Yes?
Mayor, council, you're in the seat on the list of resolutions. There's a resolution for authorization for the purchase of 22 bulletproof vests for the police officers in the city of Uniontown. As many of you are aware, the bulletproof vests expire after a period of time. We're reaching the expiration period of our bulletproof vests. The money was allotted in the 2012 budget to make this purchase. We did receive a little bit of a windfall. At the police department, we applied for a bulletproof partnership grant through the federal government. Unfortunately, it will not become available until March of 2013. However, in March of 2013, we will be able to turn in the receipts for those 22 vests that we're going to purchase on contract pricing, and we will be reimbursed by the federal government for a total of half of the price of the bulletproof vests. So, I would appreciate council support on that resolution.
Maybe one more thing to add to what we was talking about. If at all possible, maybe we could do a little more with trolling up in the area where they're having those problems.
Absolutely.
I ask the chief for that, so we'll try to do our best to make it that way. No more on the agenda items?
It's ready to adjourn. Tara Harley. Why is it going to be accepted as a presentation for?
And that'll be your first resolution? Do you want to start to read that?
Oh, she's going to get her own, her here, here, here. It is offered by the city council of the city of Uniontown. Sylvia Marie Hartley. Sylvia Marie Hartley. Whereas she has born the five children born in Toledo, Ohio, to the late Dr. Robert Henry and Julia Ann Boyd's boys. Whereas she has been married to Robert Allen Hartley, Sr., for 57 years, and the proud parent of seven children along with 24 grandchildren and 21 bright grandchildren. Whereas she has traveled extensively for the last 27 years throughout the country for the Center for Disease Control. Whereas she has been the minister of music for the Mount Rose Baptist Church for 37 years and currently serves as vice president of the missionary ministry. Whereas she is currently president at the Southwest Women's Ministry, auxiliary to the Pennsylvania Baptist State Convention, and president at the Hostess Club. Whereas she organized and directed the SMT Community Choir, which traveled throughout Fayette County, and also served on the Title I Advisory Board for the Albert Gallatin School District, and on the Advisory Board for Community Action. Whereas she initiates and coordinates each Sunday at Mount Rose Baptist School in the month of February, the Black History Month program, and recognition of African-American characters. Whereas your birthday is a special time to celebrate and give the view to the world. So, therefore, I, Edward White, Mayor, Uniontown, Pennsylvania, do hereby today wish Sylvia Marie Hartley a happy 75th birthday, and also wish her many healthy years to come. Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Do you want to come forward? Congratulations on this proclamation, on her 75th birthday, and God bless her, and God bless everyone she's touched.
Amen. It is offered by the city council of the city of Uniontown to accept the report of the treasurer for the month of November 2012, being the same as hereby accepted in prior years.
Mike, you can?
No comment.
Mr. Jones?
No comment.
Mr. Gary?
I definitely do have a comment. I've found errors in prior treasurer's reports and also in this one, which will potentially have major implications with the budget process as well. But just to bring to your attention, when you look at the numbers that you actually have here in the report, don't actually add, as I brought out in a few other reports in the past. And to show that, the point, the first number in the year-to-date totals in the general fund for real estate and residence taxes is 3.3, a little over 3.3 million, $3,318,660. But when you look at the total for the general fund, the total, even though you're adding in many other items, the total's only 3.1 million 700, 3,176,409. And, you know, again, that just, that just can't be. And I found these errors on a regular basis throughout the month. I also found these errors in the 2011 treasurer's reports as well. So, I just wanted to bring that to light. So, I do not think that we should be accepting the treasurer's report.
Mr. Michael?
Well, the treasurer like to make comment?
I have to get all the figures, and I think they're personal to rank. I don't have anything on here.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I should have asked you. Well, I mean, I didn't think that he should make those, the treasurer, make accusations without the treasurer allowing a comment. I'm voting yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
No.
Mayor Pike?
Yes. Before you read the next resolution, because I'm sure Gary will have a question on every one of them, then I want this check to get in the bank before it closes. I have a check here from Dr. Ronald Sepp for our police department for $1,000. You must be doing a good job, chief. You want to come and get it?
It is offered by the city council of the city of Uniontown. Council hereby accept the minutes from the November 7th, 2012 regular council meeting and the November 28th, 2012 special council meeting.
No comment.
Mr. Jones?
No comment.
My comment's going to be, I did not get a chance to, when I picked up my packet today, the November 7th version of the, of the minutes wasn't available, so I haven't had a chance to, to review it.
Mr. Michael? Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
No.
Mayor Pike? It is offered by the city council of the city of Uniontown. Council hereby direct the Director of Account and Finance to make payment of the following invoices for services rendered or brought to court from the city of Uniontown for the November 2012 invoices. The general fund, $79,395.80. Civil fund, $127,922.71, of which $3,272.26 is a transfer to recycling. Off-street, $17,359.29. Recycling, $1,738.40. Community development, $125.25. Highway, $8,492.24. Recreation, $12,878.12.
Mr. Mayor?
My other comment, Mayor, is if we all voted no, I guess nothing will be done, no? That's my comment.
Good, good comment. Mr. Jones?
No comment.
Mr. Gary?
No comment.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Pike? It is offered by the city council of the city of Uniontown to lock your pricing with IGS Energy for natural gas in six city locations for a period of blank years as stated on attached
Mr. Michael?
No comment.
This keeps us in the same pressure, what are you talking about?
You have an option on the second page of your, yeah. You can either go for one, two, or three years. The longer you go, the less savings you get. But even for three years, it's still cheaper than the plumby gas, $100.52.
What, today?
So, you have to decide which term you want to go for, one, two, or three years.
Well, then, why did you read one year?
I said blank years.
Two.
I said blank years.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said one. Mr. Jones?
Comment?
One and two years are the same price. Look in your sheet.
The third year, they said last.
Actually, it's about, I think you lock it for three years.
Not that much.
It's up fifteen cents.
But that keeps them from raising it for three years.
For, yeah, one, two, or three years.
Mr. Gary?
I say let's lock it into three years.
I didn't get a chance to pull up. We did this last year. Was that the first year that we, I think that we did it? Is that correct?
Was it the first year that we did it?
Yes. And then we only did it for one year?
We did it for a year. Last year, we did it for a year.
Okay. Do you have the proposed figures that we had for the one, two, and three-year proposal from last year?
Not on me.
Okay. Because I believe right now, I'm actually getting a better price than what we've got on here right now. I don't know that I can have it locked in for two years. But, and I don't know what the three-year, do we put this out for bid to any companies?
No.
Right.
Do you want to go with the one, two, or three years? The one and two years lock it in at point four eight four, and if you lock it in for three years, it's point four nine nine. It's a little bit higher. So you just have to tell me which term you would like to vote on.
Well, what do we currently lock in?
I don't really care.
If you am, does that over three years?
It doesn't matter what we're locking right now. This is what we're quoted at for next year.
What does the average, cannot the best retriever vary? Would it be three years?
It's fifteen cents more.
If you pick the third-year option, this year, you're still going to pay four ninety-nine.
And with Columbia Gas, it will be point five two four. So probably the best option would be the two years.
That would give you the same for the two years. With no.
The lock-in is just in case Columbia Gas goes up to seventy-five seven, we'll lock it. I think we should go for two years.
And the third year bumps up to.
Right. And that would mean you would say that one, two, and three years.
I think we go for two years.
Excellent.
Mayor, I mean, do I have a question?
I wanted to go three. Whatever you want to do.
Really not a bad idea.
But you can't tell me what we're, what our price is today?
I don't know. That's not the price that we're getting. Whatever it is, it's not the same.
Okay, let's move on to three years.
Three years?
That's what I want.
Walking in the pricing for a period of three years, Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Geering?
No.
Mayor Fike?
Yes.
It is all by the city council of the city of Uniontown to authorize the mayor and treasurer to execute an agreement between the city of Uniontown and the Uniontown Area School District for collection and disbarment of the local service tax. From, J.W., I didn't change it. It needs to be changed from January first, two thousand twelve through January first, two thousand fifteen, as required by Act Seven of two thousand seven.
No comment.
Mr. Jones?
No comment.
Mr. Gary?
Do we have a similar agreement to date?
No, that's why we're doing it, because it's sort of something, from my understanding, talking to Joe, that we've done, that we've been doing on kind of an informal basis for a long time.
Yeah, we had research, Gary. We figured we're collecting our local service tax, but we had to write a contract on it. So we figured, we figured out three percent was a good collection.
Yeah, basically what we're doing, we're reducing a practice to writing and making some money off of it, because we're basically withholding part of this five cents as a service charge.
They get, they get forty-seven, we get forty-seven dollars, they get five dollars.
So the process and procedure here really isn't changing. We're just saying that previously, it was an informal arrangement that we had.
Correct. Exactly.
And that now we're committing it to black and white, making it a formal arrangement for a set period of time.
Correct.
With the percentage collection.
Exactly.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Geering?
Yes.
Mayor Fike?
Yes.
It is all by the city council of the city of Uniontown to authorize a purchase of twenty-two SPO point-blank ballistic vests for the police department at a purchase price of fourteen thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars.
No comment.
Jones?
No, I recommend that highly. They need them.
Mr. Gary?
My only question would be, and the chief's not here at the moment, maybe someone else can, is this one for each officer?
Yes, sir.
And what happens, heaven forbid, that, you know, somebody needed another, are we getting a special deal on this, or is this something that we can pick up at any given time?
It's a special deal.
Well, what I'm asking, though, Phil, is in case, you know, an officer.
There's a cheap place out there.
You're saying if a vest becomes expired before the expiration?
Not expired, but.
Yeah, that's what it's called, if it's used.
Okay.
If it gets used, we have other provisions, plus the officers have other type of vests. We'd be able to handle that. I think it wouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
I think the mayor would be able to, and the chief would be able to go out and buy a vest, right, Mayor?
I think.
Well, that was my only thing. I didn't know how much of a special deal that we were getting and whether or not there was any advantage.
The vest are custom. The vest are custom.
Custom to the individual.
Yes, sir.
So then, yeah, it's not like you can get something and put it in inventory and that.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Michael?
Thank you.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Geering?
Yes.
Mayor Fike?
Yes.
I mean, Jason's pretty thorough. You can assure he doesn't, he's hungry.
Uniontown City was against somebody.
At least half.
It is all by the city council of the city of Uniontown.
It's too late, you know, getting a vest.
To authorize the mayor to sign a best contracting agreement between the Fayette County Drug and Alcohol Commission and Uniontown Police Department for tobacco enforcement for two thousand thirteen.
Mr. Mike?
Mayor, Jason, designed this, we've been doing it for a couple of years. It's a good revenue source.
Mr. Jones? Mr. Gary?
No comment.
Mr. Michael? Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Geering?
Yes.
Mayor Fike?
Yes.
The next resolution is to open and accept bids for the police station in St. King's Village. We did receive today, she did. Yeah, make sure I say that. One from Weezer. It looks like BZ Construction.
First one is from Weezer Contracting of Le Mans Park.
So that the police don't.
Oh, there it is.
Forty-eight thousand dollars.
Forty-eight thousand dollars.
Yes.
That's Weezer Construction. There's three copies here.
Is that for, I didn't see the bid.
That's the base bid.
I mean, is that for labor and material?
Labor and material. Everything is completely done.
Okay.
Did they have some money for that?
The second one is.
In the budget, yeah.
The second one is BZ Construction LLC.
Greensburg here. BZ.
What are they going to do down there? What are they going to do down there?
It was the removal of the windows on the first floor and replace them with a block facade, split-faced or square-block facade, steel block. Basically, it's for protection of the police through the window itself. The repair of the windows above the stair towers and the replacement with glass block windows. It's a bunch of security issues more than anything. It's basically just.
Second floor also?
Second, some window replacements on the second floor, yes.
The second bid for BZ is thirty-three thousand, nine hundred dollars.
How many did you turn?
Thirty-three thousand nine hundred.
We only got two.
Hundred dollars, she.
It says, oh.
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand.
Fourteen thousand, fourteen thousand.
That's unbelievable.
Yeah. And this was, this was a bonded job, just so everybody knows, that the contractors were responsible for providing a bid bond we spoke of and did. And they would also be responsible for providing a one-hundred percent performance and paying the bond. So if they don't finish the job, we'll have a bond to go back on you.
Do you have any knowledge of either one of these companies and any work they've done anywhere?
I'd have to check on this company. The apparent low bidder, I'll have to check on his references. The other bidder, I do know, he's a local contractor.
I make a motion if the table isn't built on, but back, is able to look at both these.
Second emotion.
Is that a, could I do something else?
I think that's fine, you know, I mean, at the moment, we would be sort of obliged to take the B.
Well, we don't know which is responsible.
We don't know if it's the lowest qualified bid. We know it's the lowest bid. So I think, I think it would be us to find out if it's the most, most qualified bid.
Responsible bidder, so I'd make the motion. Claire, did you say?
I said.
Especially with such a difference in the price.
It's a big difference. Motion to table the police station bid seconded by Mr. Jones. Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Geering?
No.
Mayor Fike?
Yes. I think two that might be able to go a little less.
Did you want to recommend one of them people?
Who's the comment player in here?
I asked you if you wanted to recommend any one of them people you voted no.
You sent it circulation, Claire. We'll certainly review the bids for potential saving of office.
Yes.
John, would one of the possibilities be that we are, that the city has a contractor and subcontractors this work?
I mean, you have to be careful what your procurement regulations are. I mean, you can't circumvent your procurement regulations. If you can, if you can self-perform some of the work, you certainly will be allowed to do that and acquire other materials. But we can't circumvent state procurement regulations to.
So we would have to take it or say.
I mean, basically, yeah, because really, right now, what you're doing is you're operating with a contract that requires prevailing wages. Okay, so, I mean, that's.
Might not be able to use in-kind services in that.
I'm not saying that. If you can self-perform by using some in-kind services, that's certainly one avenue that you have to do some work, so, if you could do that. But just keep in mind, if you're going to use city forces or some in-kind services, that's just taking away from some other project that you may be able to complete, so. Right now, I mean, the price certainly goes up when you get over and you start bidding things and you need to use prevailing wages and things like that. I mean, the price, I mean, it goes up dramatically because you're using Masons that are getting paid.
It's not prevailing wages.
No.
So you're her battle, that's what the.
Sure.
The next resolution is for bids for the gas and diesel for the city vehicles for two thousand thirteen. We had great, you know, just recently, the names of the.
Center Independent Energy LLC, Pittsburgh, PA.
And there should be two trying to, one for unleaded and one for diesel.
Who did this from?
This one is from Center Independent.
First bid is Center Independent Pacific Pride, unleaded gas, ninety-four cents per gallon, I almost made, two dollars and ninety-two, nine five, two nine, two nine five.
That's for unleaded?
Unleaded. Diesel, three, got three, 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 five.
From Nagy?
Unleaded, two dollars, seven, six, nine for unleaded. And for diesel, three dollars, two, six, nine. Should I just say?
Yeah.
Nagy's is left?
Yes.
Yes, we do have a better one. The delayed Speedway.
Unleaded?
Is it Speedway though?
Yes.
Okay.
Two dollars and nine, nine, four.
Good size.
They also gave a premium unleaded price. Diesel, three dollars, five, five, four.
Okay, Speedway was high bid at two point nine nine four for their unleaded diesel, three point five five four. Center Independent Pacific Pride gave a price of unleaded at two point nine two nine five, diesel at three point three three five three. And Nagy Gas and Oil unleaded, two dollars and two point seven six nine, and diesel, three point two six nine.
I would just like to make note that Pacific Pride is firmly where we are, that that's Route Fifty-One, One Ninety-Bike Pass. And Nagy states that we would be able to use cars, which we use now at the intersection of Route Forty East and Stewart Avenue across from the high school, which is in the middle of the city.
Trying to make a motion that we accept the bid from Nagy?
Jason, do you have an issue?
Wherever you tell us to do cash, we do cash.
Would it be easier to do it to Nagy's? I mean, that's right in the city, right?
See, it's in, I mean, it does hurt you.
Where you get it at now is pretty handy.
Pacific Pride, yeah.
I mean, you got it very well.
It doesn't need other for us.
With the trucks.
Phil?
Comments, Phil?
What's the difference between Pacific Pride and Nagy?
You mad money?
Right.
It's like seven cents a gallon.
No, more than. Unleaded is Nagy's two-seven-six-nine and Pacific is two-nine-two-nine-five.
Sixteen cents.
And diesel, three-point-two-six-nine to three-three-five-three, which is what?
A little lower six cents on diesel.
We purchased the Nagy's before. We had them before.
Do I have a second to Gary's motion to accept the last price, last bid from Nagy Gas and Oil?
I make the second.
They resolved by the city council and city of Uniontown to accept the bid for gasoline and diesel fuel for city vehicles for the year 2013, submitted by Nagy Gas and Oil at a price of two-point-seven-six-nine for unleaded and three-point-two-six-nine for diesel. Mr. Michael?
We don't call anybody.
Yeah.
I have no comment.
My comment is that it's pretty handy.
It is.
For the street department where they're at now. It's not always the lowest bid.
It.
And you have to take a lot into consideration.
It is. That's why I asked the price. It is much more convenient for Pacific Pride for trucks. Because you get in there at the corner, sometimes you get four or five trucks in there, you're jamming.
Yeah, and you got the school kids over there all the time at that corner. So I'll tell you what, less isn't best always.
Yeah.
Chuck?
Now, Mr. Mayor, we, we did get it up there at the high school. There's a real problem getting out of our equipment in and out there.
It's just out there. Mr. Jones? Comment?
Mr. Gearing?
No comment.
Mr. Michael?
Well, I appreciate the comment and helped me develop my decision. No.
No.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
No.
Well, then I'll make the motion that we go to Pacific Pride based, based on the comments that it's probably best service all of our departments.
And I'll make motion, or not motion, but note that I don't have a clue who owns Pacific Pride. Not a clue.
I don't.
It had nothing to do with the way I look.
It's a last talking.
You do? I'll change my.
Do we have a second to Mr. Michael's motion to accept?
I'll say.
Okay. They resolved by the city council and city of Uniontown to accept the bid for gasoline and diesel fuel for city vehicles for the year 2013, submitted by Pacific Pride at a price of two-point-nine-two-nine-five for unleaded and three-point-three-three-five-three for diesel. Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
No.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
Can you buy both places? Is there a rule that tells you you're allowed to buy one place? Can you buy an average price?
No.
No? Any empty?
One contractor.
They resolved by the city council and the city of Uniontown that the city of Uniontown shall implement a modified duty policy to take appropriate actions to bring injured employees back to work as soon as it is determined to be a medically sound decision, policy attached hereto to become effective immediately.
Yes. All right, I have a comment. Sorry.
Is that?
For light duty with the ones out of work of course.
Mr. Jones?
That don't change anything before, does it?
It just puts a policy in effect.
I mean, we always enforced that that way anyhow, didn't we?
We never had a policy. We never had a policy. We need to update our policies.
It's for light duty, Blair, like.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Gearing, was, was this a policy that was reviewed by Mr. Snyder, since he's been working in handling our human resources?
This was not. It was a policy that is assembled, given to us by our insurance carrier.
We discussed this with our insurance carrier. They suggested that we, that we implement this.
And we can do it. We can bring it back without a policy. It's just.
Recommend that we table it until it gets reviewed by Mr. Snyder before we vote on it, just so that he's aware of it before we implement it. See if he has any comments.
He's aware of it.
We discussed it with him. I don't just think we gave, he gave us a, we haven't looked at the final draft.
Do I have a second to Mr. Herring's motion? Motion died due to lack of seconds. Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
No.
Joe, you bought the list.
Mayor Pike? Mayor Pike?
Yes.
Keep trying to say let's go.
They resolved by the city council and the city of Uniontown to da, to table the adoption of proposed ordinance number sixteen fifty-four, bill number sixteen eighty-four, rental section until further notice.
Hi, Mr. Coleman.
Mr. Coleman.
Mr. Gearing? Well, my comment would be that this is what I asked us to do at the last meeting.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yeah.
They resolved by the city council and the city of Uniontown, whereas the commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Department of Transportation is the agency charged with granting permits to allow the placement of signs or banners within the state rightful length. And whereas the Department of Transportation requires the city of Uniontown to pass a resolution to authorize the placement of banners or signs and to set certain limits on said banners or signs. And whereas the city of Uniontown wishes to allow banners or signs relative to national, regional, or local functions for charitable affairs. And this is a request by great Bethel Lappas Church, Christian Men's Fellowship, Rethink Union Town Publishing, for him to keep pricing this as a banner. There.
No comment.
Mr. Jones? Mr. Gearing?
I'm gonna defer to the solicitor right now whether or not give his comments, saying, you know, I'm, I'm all for saying Merry Christmas and, but again, my own personal views and my own personal beliefs aren't necessarily the law, the law of the land, which is why I'm deferring this to the solicitor.
What's the content of the proposed banner again? I'm looking for.
Picture on, on the back.
And where they want it spaced.
I think you'd refer to the council. Everyone's noted.
Payant Union.
I think basically where you hide it, hang all the other banners. You know, the turkey trot by the Salvation Army. That's normally where we hang banners for the city. So it's.
I, I, I think it's okay because we're not, we're not sanctioning it. It's, we're merely allowing a church to display it.
Well, we're sanctioning it because we're voting on it.
We're, we're voting on it, but we're not providing any official.
You have to get people, you have to get anyone to write the freedom of speech. Excuse me, I'm, I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna vote yes. I'm just putting it past the solicitor just in case.
You don't have to vote yes.
Some of, our consequences, somebody gets their knickers in the bunches, they're gonna ask us to take it down.
We have, we have an open, we're, we're providing an open forum for some. We have to, we, we would be discriminating based on content, I think, if we didn't allow this based only on that reason. That's would be my thing.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes. I'd also like to thank the people that done the decorating. Here in the room, here in City Hall, looks very nice, whoever that might have been.
That missly.
You did that, huh, Jenny?
They resolved by the city council and the city of Uniontown to introduce proposed ordinance number sixteen sixty-eight, bill number sixteen eighty-eight, and ordinance amending Union Town Fireman's pension plan to add a board of managers to decide pension claims other than disability claims, and to direct the city clerk to advertise appropriate notice of intention to adopt said proposed ordinance at the regular meeting of city council on January second, two thousand thirteen.
No comment.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I, I don't understand it. You're, you're saying that this board of managers can say whether they have a claim or not?
The third class city code requires the city to have a pension board, if you have a board of managers, if you will. And it requires the designated department heads to be on the board, as outlined in section one. And is it just making it official?
Because we do that anyway.
Yeah, they do that, but it has, it has the board of managers to have the authority to make initial decision on pension claims except a disability claim. That, that don't sound right, Councilman. That's the last paragraph.
For the initial, initial decision, I mean, it's sort of not a hot word, to be appealed to council and then to, you know, complies.
Well, you're telling me if I get hurt on a job and I go to a doctor, I, I can't, the board says whether I can be accepted or not.
That, that'd be a disability claim, wouldn't it?
Not necessarily. What if a doctor just gives me time off and, and, you know, you don't have a claim for disability at the top.
What are you saying? Then you would get hurt and then retire?
What?
Are you saying then you would get hurt and retire?
No.
How, how, how would that affect anything with sick days?
This is a pension. This is when you retire.
Yeah.
They do that now, the pension board, except when you retire, they put you on the pension. You have to be eligible for the pension.
This is just to introduce it, Blair. If you have questions, you can call Randy Rhodes and talk to him.
I get, what they're saying, Blair, is like if you retire for two years, you're not, I mean, somebody gotta put you on the pension if you're eligible.
You're telling me this board has the authority to say no?
Well, if you're eligible, they couldn't, they couldn't say no. They're saying if you're not.
Well, I may think I'm eligible and you may think I'm not, this board. That's what I'm saying. Maybe my doctor says I'm eligible and the board says no.
We do that now. We have a pension board now.
Well, I understand you have a pension board, but I don't think the pension board, that's reading a giraffe in this there. That wasn't added in there.
This is just to introduce it? If you don't want to pass it or adopt it in January, if you have, if you want to look into it further in the.
What are you saying?
I, I know it's required by the code.
It was suggested by.
I'm fairly sure, I mean, I have to look at it to be sure, but I'm pretty certain that the, the third class city code outlines the duties that the board's got, but I'm pretty sure that that language is right from the book. I mean, I have to look to be sure, but fairly sure.
Has, has this ever been in place before?
I thought it was. I.
I, I make a motion going to executive session to discuss personnel issue related to this.
I say.
I.
Okay. Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Sure.
Mayor Pike?
Is this from the executive session?
Yes. Council reconvened from executive session at five-fifty P.M. Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
They resolved by the city council and the city.
I didn't get to ask any questions yet.
Okay, thank you.
Questions about what?
This, this ordinance that we were just gonna talk about in executive session.
Then what'd you vote on for?
We didn't vote.
You just voted. We just voted.
No, we voted to come back from executive session, Blair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Now, you know Gary has something to say, so we gotta let him say. Paul?
Gary?
I do have some questions.
Hurry up.
The solicitor's looking to see whether or not this is something that was or wasn't required by third-class city code, because a comment was made that it was a requirement of third-class city code. So I'm looking to get a ruling on that. And my other question would be right now, has this policy that we're looking to put into place, since it's, again, a human resource policy, has it been reviewed by Attorney Snyder?
It's not a human resource policy. It's a pension policy. And we have pension counsel named Randy Rhodes. And Mr. Rhodes sent us the letter to suggest that Mr. Snyder does not deal with our pension plan. He refers, if we ask him a pension question, he refers it to Mr. Rhodes, who is our pension manager advisor. So it was reviewed by Mr. Rhodes, suggested by Mr. Rhodes, and that's why we're bringing it to council's attention.
Okay, but we are dealing with personnel issues, so it hasn't been reviewed by human resources. Do we, do we have this board in place for any other pensions or departments?
It was suggested by Mr. Rhodes to, to make this, to put this in place for the fire pension, fireman's pension.
We have it for the lease pension, don't we?
Yes. Mayor? I would, I mean, we, since I've been in the fire department, we've always had a pension board.
It's just not ever been formalized. That's how we're doing.
Yeah. Doing nothing different. Just making it right.
Well, if we already have an established pension board, what, what is this doing? Is this, is this replacing the existing pension board?
They're the same people, Gary. Read the ordinance.
There's twenty bucks.
Yeah. In other words, if you don't like it, then, no. Go ahead.
They resolved by the city council and the city of Uniontown to introduce proposed ordinance number sixteen sixty-eight, bill number sixteen eighty-eight, and ordinance amending the Union Town Fireman's pension plan to add a board of managers to decide pension claims other than disability claims, and to direct the city clerk to advertise appropriate notice of intention to adopt said proposed ordinance at the regular meeting of city council on January second, two thousand thirteen. Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Palomo? Mr. Gearing?
Uh, since I didn't get the answer, uh, field all my questions on things because I'm not sure how it's even being done now, and I don't have a ruling from the solicitor yet, my vote is no.
Mayor fight?
Since I had, do understand it, and the solicitor has told me what's going on, I vote yes.
Thank you. That's all I have, man.
Uh, I'm almost afraid to ask this, but since he commented. Comment? Comment, Mr. Jones? Mr. Gary?
Not, uh, not at this time.
They resolve by the City Council and the City of Uniontown. The council adjourns to meet Friday, December twenty-eighth, two thousand and twelve, at four thirty PM.
Yes.
Mr. Michael? Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor fight?
Yes.